We will begin the first public hearing of two. This first public hearing is on ordinance 2023-11. This is to adopt the budget for the fiscal year 2023-24. We have one person that would like to speak this evening. I believe it's Ray Bent.
It's Raymond B. Craft.
Could you say that one more time?
It's Raymond B. Craft. Excuse me, I'm getting older, so therefore glasses are needed to read. Oh, I'm going to, although I could probably project my voice easily.
All right, Raymond, I'm sorry about that. I apologize.
Oh, good. All right, obviously, I'm a resident of the town of Mount Airy, and I have a few things to say. I understand the council is about to change, but before that happens, I want to take this opportunity to be able to speak to this body and the future body about a few things. One of the things I want to talk about is integrity. Right in the military, integrity is doing what's right legally and morally. Integrity is a quality you develop by adhering to moral principles. It requires that you do and say nothing that deceives others, and as your integrity grows, so does the trust others place in you. The biggest thing about integrity is doing what is right without someone being able to watch you. Now, there's another thing that the Army talks about, and we have what's called leadership principles. Now, I'm not going to go into all twelve of the principles, but I am going to talk about one in particular.
Raymond, can I interrupt really quickly?
Sure.
This is on the--
Oh, I talked about the budget.
Oh, okay, all right. We were all just sort of looking at each other.
Oh, no. We get to the budget.
Sorry to interrupt.
All good. Now, this principle--
Integrity.
The principle states that leaders should seek responsibility and take responsibility for their actions. Now, everybody on here ran for council because you wanted to seek responsibility, right? You need to take responsibility for actions. Now, we've gone across the budget when it comes to the Beck property. The Beck property has been beaten into the ground by other people who came up here to speak, so I'm not even going to talk about the Beck property. But what I am going to talk about is some of our budget. And one of the budgets that we need to talk about is going to be about some of the money that's been wasted within the town. We've had projects that were not thought out very well and designed. The intersection of Prospect Road and Main Street is a prime example. It is way more dangerous now than it ever was, especially for high-traffic times when people are attempting to make a left and a right simultaneously. At this time, cars are pulled out into where the crosswalk is. Where are pedestrians supposed to be able to move when there's cars on the crosswalk? We're talking about wasting money. That was a money waster. We're talking about the budget. We need to think a little bit smarter before we start spending the taxpayers' money for the budget. Now, another example of our budget being wasted was when we decided that on Rising Ridge Road, we were going to put stop signs and speed bumps at the two intersections. Well, 5% of the drivers who drive through there actually stopped at the stop signs. The speed bumps actually slowed people down. The speed bumps were a good idea. Stop signs, not really too good of an idea unless you're going to enforce them. Mount Airy Police Department does not enforce the stop signs. They don't enforce a stop sign at the end of Prospect Road. Now, since we're talking about our police department, let's talk about the funding. In 2011, the proposed budget included about $900,000 for the Mount Airy Resident Trooper Program. That gave us about five troopers. Now, one of the concerns was because of the cost of that budget for the trooper program. Well, you know what? Our current budget that's proposed is over $5 million for having our own law enforcement. Our own law enforcement. So let's see, what have our own law enforcement done so far? Okay? We have a police force that we don't need because the Resident Trooper Program was perfectly fine. We always had local deputy sheriffs from Carroll County and Frederick County that patrolled Mount Airy during that time. I know, I grew up around here. So now, we have a police force that's wasted millions of dollars. We've just had their chief resign, as well as other members, and nobody knows why. It's a waste of money. Now, our taxes pay for the police, but we don't see the police department running radar in known high-speed areas, right? Instead, we hear about them and see them at Walmart, Food Lion, and Carnival Grounds, et cetera, all during high-traffic times. This is money wasted. This is money the taxpayers in this town have been throwing towards this council and the town for years. Now, I know the council is about to change, so I'm here to explain exactly-- let me explain exactly why I'm here. I'm here so that every member of this council understands that you have not fulfilled the duties to represent the best interests of the town of Mount Airy, either through your actions or your inaction. This is also concerning any future members. Any future members that's going to be a member of this town council, who I know there's at least one here today, is that the town residents are no longer going to sit back and wait. We're not going to sit back and be quiet. We expect that the money to be used for the best interests of the town. I spent two decades in the Army, and in that time, I went through tons of budget cuts, tons of budget cuts, and we learned to provide and still had good training. This council needs to start learning how to adequately use our money better. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will go ahead and close the first public hearing on ordinance 2023-11 to adopt the budget for the fiscal 2023-2024 hearing. Our next public hearing will be at 7:15. This is to adopt the tax rates. Evening. We're going to begin our second public hearing. The second public hearing is on ordinance 2023-10. This is to adapt-- adopt the tax rates for fiscal year 2023-2024. Currently, I do not have any speakers that are going to speak at this public hearing, but if anyone would like to come on up. Sounds good. I will go ahead and close this public hearing on ordinance 2023-10 to adopt the tax rates for fiscal year 2023-2024. Our regularly scheduled meeting will begin at 7:30. Thank you very much. Council meeting. Earlier this evening, we had two public hearings. The first on ordinance 2023-11. This is to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2023-24. The second public hearing was on ordinance 2023-10. This was to adopt the tax rates for fiscal year 2023-2024. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do not have any scheduled presentations this evening, and so we'll begin with public comment. So if you would like to address the council, come on up.
I'm going to run up here first. All right. Good evening. I am Becky Poyer, live in town, and have been a resident here for 16 years, and I'm married to that dude at the head of the table. Before I begin, I noticed you did not comment about your phone timer, so please keep that down. I have given the town my husband for eight years, and I'm going to take about eight minutes. Sorry. When council president first ran, we had a five-year-old, a two-year-old, and our third child wasn't even in existence yet. We had lived in Nottingham for eight years, and Jason was working as a fifth-grade teacher in a Title I school, as well as working as a technical director of Rouse Theater for Performing Arts in Columbia. He was a soccer coach with MEA, on the swim team board for the Nottingham Marlins, and working with the PTA at PARZ on various events. Fast forward eight years, and today, we have a 13-year-old getting ready to graduate from eighth grade at Mount Airy Middle, a 10-year-old fourth grader at Mays, and a seven-year-old first grader at PARZ. Our kids have literally grown up with Daddy as a council member, and they have had, oh, can't look at you, the absolute best role model to learn how to live life in a very positive manner, serving others. Eight years ago, most people probably didn't know who Jason Poyer was. I bet you do now. Whether you like him or not, there is no denying that he has given a lot of himself for this town. Jason, over the last eight years, you have literally been everything. You have been a council member, council secretary, council president, and acting mayor. You have served on beautification, parks and wrecks, recycling and sanitation, water and sewer commissions, and even helped create the Sustainability Commission you are still currently on. You have stepped into streets and roads when Scott Strong had to resign, and have been to numerous EDC and planning commission meetings. You fully understand how every commission works and the council's role in them. You have been on the Green Team Task Force to create sustainability, the Police Task Force to create our police department. You worked with-- you worked to bring HOAs together early in your career and attended every HOA in town for years. You worked with Ava's T-21 Foundation, community volunteers, and the Parks Board to bring the first accessible swing before Town Councilwoman Reed worked tirelessly to get an inclusive playground. You have brought countless opportunities to our town by working with staff, volunteers, council members, and mayors. You created and passed ordinances that better our town and bring it better opportunities. You made our parks smoke-free. You got grants for sustainability, helped bring the caboose with Mayor Hushour and the town police force. You got all of our parks into the 911 system, which we unfortunately found out they were not. You created the Adopt a Road Program, worked to keep this place looking gorgeous. You helped your neighborhood after the tornado by chainsawing trees at 10:00 p.m. with Mayor Pat, and brought our neighborhood together with a good old-fashioned barbecue here in Town Hall after a very stressful vote pitted our neighbors against each other. You ran eight years ago to do something. You saw for years the proverbial kicking of the can down the road, and you ran to make a difference. You took classes at lightning speed to get your one-millionth degree in public policy from the University of Maryland. You researched, you learned, you listened. You were the guy that nobody had an issue with until they did. You may not be the guy who brought the Flatiron to vote, but you were the guy who got it to the table. You ran eight years ago, and then four years ago, saying something needed to be done with that building. You pushed the topic, and as a result, you got people involved. You may not be the guy who was liked when the decision to tear it down was made, but you were the guy who later compromised and gave the Flatiron Task Force a chance. You were the guy who listened. It may not be a vote that you and I agree on, but you changed your mind, and you voted to try to keep the Flatiron alive. You did the bigger thing you said you would do when you ran, and that was you listened to the people. So whereas I may not agree with all your votes, I agree with your values, your passion, and your ability to see the big picture. With all these things, Jason, I think the thing I am most proud of you for is when you became the acting mayor when Mayor Pat passed away. You lost your colleague and your friend. Your son lost his BFF, and the town lost its hero. You served as the amazing bridge between our beloved late Mayor Pat and our current Mayor Hushour. You did a job that no one, and I truly mean no one, could have done. People will say, when we didn't have a mayor, but we never didn't have a mayor. Ask the town staff, who happily worked under you and wrote the amazing letter that is now framed in our house. You are what this town needed in uncertain times, and I know people will argue that it was unconstitutional that you held two positions at once, but you didn't ask for your friend to die, and you didn't write the town charter. Many mayors and neighboring municipalities reached out during this time and were surprised. Our charter was not written like that of the Constitution. The president dies, the VP assumes the position. The mayor dies, the president assumes the position and appoints a replacement to the council or an election is held. Maybe this is the actual part of the town charter that should actually be looked at. People can complain all they want, but you did everything in your power to keep the town running, to maintain progress on the council, and to keep things positive as an election occurred. No one will ever love every vote you have cast, but no one can deny your love of this town. To those who are running, and I know some of you are here, thank you for being willing to serve and volunteer, but I guarantee you, you do not really know what you're getting into. And I would bet my entire life savings, which I must say has not been padded by developers, that your spouses have no clue what is about to happen. Sure, you know it's council meetings, maybe some special events and such. Yeah, you need to prepare when the agenda comes out, and please, check your email, but be careful not to miss one when you're on vacation with your family, because it really ticks people off. But do you and your family really know what it means to be a council member? Jason, while you were at your other full-time job the other night, I counted on our Google Calendar. Over the last eight years, you had 584 different council events on the calendar. That is over one-fifth of the days over the last eight years, and that does not include things like MML that are multi-days. You attended 95 council meetings, never, ever missing one, and the one time I asked you to come on family vacation, you ran the meeting from the basement of our beach house with 19 people in the house. You ran that meeting on the phone. You attended 134 different commission meetings, 109 special events like ribbon cuttings, 5Ks, fundraisers, parades, talks in our local schools, 25 MML chapter meetings, and 208 other things like budget meetings, public hearings, charrettes, meeting with county commissioners, meetings at the Board of Ed, meetings in Annapolis advocating for our town. This list does not even include the days that you went to Town Hall to prep for council meetings, late nights answering emails, or all the constant phone calls, or the people who would just stop you in the grocery store or the pool to talk, and you never said no. You have dedicated so much of your time over the last eight years, and I hope that those who are running know that this job, to do it well, takes dedicated time. Time you gave while you were still teaching full-time, while you were still running Rouse Theater full-time, while you were still coaching our son's soccer teams or basketball teams or lacrosse teams, while still helping me run the Nottingham Marlins Swim Team, while helping me at my dance studio and helping it thrive and come out of the pandemic, while still being an involved dad to our kids going to sports practices or the karate dojo or lacrosse games or all-day-long swim meets, and while still being the guy who helps everyone around town without batting an eye, and while still being my amazing husband and partner in life. Being on council is flipping hard. It is hard on you with the commitment, but what those of you may not realize, it's hard on your families. It is 584 events times God knows how many hours. It's the meetings, the phone calls, the planning, it's the missed family dinners, or your fabulous wife picking up the slack, but it's even harder, because sometimes, people are just not nice. To those running, it's not going to matter how many great things you do. You're going to do one thing that's going to challenge somebody's thinking, and you are going to be torn down on social media. You're going to tell yourself, as the council member, it's no big deal, you don't care, but let me tell you something. Your spouse will. Your neighbors will. Your 13-year-old son who goes to school and hear what kids repeat from their parents, he will. I promise you, candidates, I will not tear you down, and I've already reached out to you, and my offer stands true. I will support your families in any way that I can. I believe you're all are running to do something good, just as the five people in front of you. There are no perks to council. You're going to make literally 50 cents an hour for every hour you put into this job. If you're sitting at this table, as my husband has for the last eight years, you are sitting here, I assume, with the intention to support our town. So town citizens, I beg you, stop belittling your council, support them. They really are just volunteering. I know it's easy to say what you want from the safety behind your keyboard, but think before you type. Your words matter. I promise, I'm almost done. Council President, you are an amazing man, and I admire you for all you've done. You fought for this town, you brought it so much positivity and opportunity, and have done it with quiet grace. You let comments roll off your back, hold nothing against anyone, and truly work to connect and listen to everyone. I wanted to publicly tell you tonight, since I can never come to these meetings because I am shuttling our children, I am proud of you. Your children are proud of you. Thank you for being who you are and never settling for being subpar. I have no doubt whatever comes your way next will be tackled with the same energy and respect and drive that you have brought to this council table. Jason, you are nonstop, but it's time for you to talk less and smile more. Thank you.
You're free to go.
Love you. See you later. Bye, guys.
We got two in McDonough right now, so. All right, drive safe. Only if you can follow that.
Well, what I have to urge you to do is require to follow that.
Awesome.
Bruce Wallace, Chair of the Board of Election Supervisors, just here to remind you that tomorrow, the polls will open promptly at 7:00 a.m. Remain open until 8:00 p.m. at the Fireman's Reception Hall, 1008 Twin Arch Road, and I encourage everyone to please, please, if you can, come out and vote. People have lined up at this podium for the last two years with different opinions and complaints. Now's the time to put that into action. Every vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful tribute. Difficult to stand up after that, but Ron Thompson, Vanmar Associates, and I'm here to address ordinance 2023-9, wellhead protection. You've heard my viewpoint before, and I'll just reiterate it again tonight quickly. The only new wells being proposed in the town of Mount Airy are on the Beck property. This ordinance would have a disastrous impact that would eliminate the new potential wells, including the anticipated 100,000-gallon-per-day well near the existing Center Street. It is our understanding that the proposed 325-foot-square-well-protection-box is being proposed per EPA recommendations or regulations listed in the master plan. We've researched these EPA regulations and find no reference to this 325-foot-square-well box, both myself and Mike Hoffler, hydroterra. The 100-foot well radius is used as the standard by the Maryland Department of the Environment and is the standard well radius used throughout Maryland and the United States. It's proven effective in providing wellhead protection. Increasing this wellhead buffer is excessive and provides no additional protection. We've completed an analysis and find there is no way to impose the 325-foot-square-well-protection buffer zone due to existing buildings, streets, access roads, rails to trails, and other impervious services without canceling the well locations proposed for the Beck property. Once again, we ask the Town Council not to approve this ordinance or any amendments, and please vote it down. This accomplishes nothing and is not in the best interest of the town. Thank you.
Good evening, Clerk Wagner, Pleasance Development. My statement is coming around, and rather than bore you with a lot of repetition from Mr. Thompson's comments, I'll let you read that on your own, and I would offer my congratulations to the Council President and Ms. Reed for moving on, and good luck to you both, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dave Bowersocks, 24 North Court Street. I'm here to make some remarks about ordinance 2023-9 as well. First, for those departing members of this council, you've probably gotten to know me better or seen more of me over the past four years than you really wanted. I wish you both all the luck in the world in whatever your new endeavors are.
Thank you.
And if I may say so, Mr. President, don't take this the wrong way, but after the presentation tonight, I know I'm not the other one, the only one in the room who got better than he deserves, so. This is going to be a quick summary. Actually, Mr. Thompson has already addressed part of it. You remember several times we've come in here and made it clear that when I say "we," the Pleasance team and the Beck family are willing to entertain constructive dialogue towards getting a resolution in a collaborative way. We can't do that by ourselves. There's been a series of ordinance proposals that despite some of what we've heard about a willingness to engage seem to indicate to the contrary. 2023-9 is one of those. Maybe it's inadvertent. We know there's supposedly some reference to a 325-square-box around the wellheads mentioned in the plan, or we've heard there is, and it's supposed to be an EPA-suggested standard. As Mr. Thompson's told you, our research indicates that we cannot find any jurisdictions that use a configuration such as is being proposed. Actually, it's a 100-foot radius, which is recommended by EPA, and which most of the jurisdictions in this state, I can't say universally because I don't know, most jurisdictions in this state use, and it's what your ordinance currently provides, what the county ordinance currently provides, excuse me. So we're wondering, what is the event that precipitated the need to modify your ordinance? There's no known, to us, history of well failures because of wellhead protection issues. The only thing we can see is the pendency of the Pleasance application for the Beck So we're still interested in a constructive dialogue, to work collaboratively. We're still willing to do that, and we're still looking for a partner.
Thank you.
John, can you verify that the meeting is live?
I don't see it on my face computer, so.
On Community Media Center, Carroll County, live. Please look.
It's not there. It's not on Carroll Media either.
All right, I mean, we're live on Channel 23, right? So, I mean, that's typically what happens anyway, so. No, I know that, I know. All right. Any other public comments?
Dan Voss, 28 Park Avenue. So we just heard from the developers. They talk about cooperation, working together, and being collaborative. I think what they actually mean is capitulate. They seem to want us to do whatever is in their best interest, so that the-- I'm going to misquote it, what is it, 2023-9? Their bottom line is affected. It means that quite possibly, they'll have to go back to or consider the number of houses that were in the 2013 mapping. I think that was like 185 homes versus the 500-plus, absolutely excessive overdevelopment, and that's why they don't like it. That's why the three of them have come up and talked about the reasons that they need some sort of working together, some sort of cooperation. They want us to work within their plans. They're not listening to what we want, and I really request that the council listen to what the townspeople are talking about and what we would like, which doesn't seem to be on par or in line with what developers want. So please keep that in mind while you're voting this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead to speakers. Councilman DeMutter would like to talk about the APFO.
All right, thank you. I wanted to just make some brief remarks about ordinance 2023-8, which got introduced in March, and I'm the sponsor of this introduced ordinance, and the ordinance is currently under review now within the Planning Commission. So when it got introduced, we didn't really get a chance to kind of give it, kind of frame it out and explain what the objectives were, and so I wanted to just tick through a little bit of that very briefly. So 2023-8 provides guidelines intended to aid the Planning Commission in making a determination to grant or deny an open space waiver. I'm very passionate about the need to protect and ensure the adequacy of our public facilities. You've heard this from me before. In particular, open space. This is why I prepared this amended ordinance. And for all the development issues, I look through the lens of adequate public facilities, and you've seen me do that before with the screening assessment approach that I was advocating for, and I'm pleased to see the town is moving ahead on. So as you know, the town currently has an-- So as you know, the town currently has an 83-acre deficit of open space. The current ordinance provides an opportunity for a developer to apply for and be granted an open space waiver. There are minimum open space amounts that serve as the floor for qualifying for such a waiver, but these minimum amounts only really get you in the door for consideration. It's not an automatic granting of a waiver. My goal in preparing this ordinance was to offer a set of guidelines, they're not requirements, they're guidelines, to assist or provide a flexible roadmap of sorts to guide the Planning Commission members in considering other key aspects or attributes of open space. The guidelines centered around things like considering the amount of open space relative to the current town deficit, what's the quality and types of open space being provided, what's the quantity of open space for that development, what are the benefits of that open space, not just to that particular development, but to the surrounding communities and more broadly, the entire town. And this applies for any development, single-family, townhouses, small developments, more complex developments, to include MXD. The ordinance also calls for documenting the PC waiver decision, and importantly, the rationale for the decision that was made by the Planning Commission in a formal memorandum that is accessible to the public, because it's important to be transparent. And we don't want these decisions to be viewed as arbitrary or capricious. So the goal here, again, is providing a list of elements for the Planning Commission to consider. They can use all of them, some of them, use them to varying degrees as they see fit, but it will help them get to a determination of if they want to grant a waiver or not. Additionally, in the updated draft that's being considered by the Planning Commission, it's been added that in the case of MXD or MXUCC developments, the open space waiver should be requested by the developer and be acted upon by the Planning Commission before the town council's vote on the pre-concept sketch layout plan. Open space is the only public facility element eligible for a waiver, and as such, I believe such a waiver should be determined upfront in the development plan review process for everyone's benefit. In the case of the pre-concept plan phase, it is the pre-concept plan that lays out the site components, such as proposed recreational areas, to serve the intended residential population pursuant to Section 98-61(c)(2)D of the Town Code. So lastly, a couple of comments, because I've, I've been getting some feedback from Planning Commission members and, and from citizens and from town officials about these proposed guidelines. And one of the sentiments expressed was, should the Planning Commission really be making an open, open space waiver determination? Should that be the town council instead? And I have to say, while that may be appealing to some, it's really not the town council's authority to do that. It's, it's the authority of the Planning Commission to do that, which is granted by the state of Maryland. And indeed, if you look at the state of Maryland's handbook for Planning Commission duties and responsibilities, it states, "The Planning Commission has the authority over the use of land for public purposes. Specifically, the Planning Commission is charged with approving location, character, and extent of publicly or privately owned streets, squares, parks, or other public way, ground, or open space." So I believe this responsibility is appropriate within the Planning Commission. The last thing I want to offer is, again, I'm hearing some vibes that, well, when we get a new town council, there, there's a sentiment that people might want to repeal the open space waiver and do away with it. And I would just caution incoming council members, whoever they may be, and current council members, repealing ordinances, significantly modifying ordinance that's, that have requirements in them pertaining to development, while we're in the middle of a development process for an MXD project, is a slippery slope. And just think about where you might be taking the town in terms of potential litigation. So that's something to think about for those who, who think you want to totally change the system midstream. And then the last comment, these guidelines can be used right now by the public. I'm going to use them, and the citizens can use them in the upcoming Beck property charrette. So for example, when you're evaluating the pre-concept sketch plan, you can look at these guidelines, and they will help you ask questions about the nature and extent of the open space, the quality of the open space, how that's driving the overall quality of the development, because it is a proven fact by U.S. EPA and other sources that the quality and amount of open space drives the value of a community and a development. Property values are higher over time, they're much more appealing over time. My opinion is, open space drives the quality of a development. So those are my thoughts. I wanted to kind of lay that out for you. The Planning Commission is currently reviewing these. They will come back to the council, and then we'll go from there. But that's an overview of, of what I'm trying to accomplish through that ordinance. So thank you.
Thank you, council member. We'll go ahead and move into the council meeting minutes and the closed meeting minutes and the approval of. First up is April 2023 Town Council Meeting Minutes, April 2023 Public Hearing Meeting Minutes, Ordinance 2023-1 MXD, April 2023 Closed Meeting Minutes. For Section 3-305B, subsection 1, this is for personnel matter. I will make a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Munder, second. Any major clarifications or edits? All those for approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move into the Civil Airport Patrol Report with Captain Rolf.
Good evening, Captain.
Good evening. This is our report for April 2023. Under significant activities, just for your awareness, a decision has been made at a level higher than mine that will actually transfer operational control of an entire another squadron, currently based at the Parkland Middle School in Montgomery County underneath Mount Airy. Basically, this, this squadron is mostly cadets, with some of the senior members that'll be added to our roles, and essentially will double the size of our squadron. This will take effect after the school year, because this is a school-based squadron, and they, their program's a little bit integrated with that school program there. But that'll, that'll change a little bit of our face on, on what we're able to support and how many people we have available to do that. Under community support, we provided road crossing support to the Monary Baptist Church's Easter event on April 1st, and we also provided information briefing on the Civil Air Patrol and what our squadron does as well to the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Qualification achievements, we have one member that entered the training pipeline for ground team leader. That'll increase our, our ability to support additional missions out there. And significant training, we had three members complete the squadron commander's course, because I'm always looking for my replacement, and one member that actually, as I mentioned, entered the ground team leader pipeline. Two more of our cadets completed orientation flights, the first ones, again, with our local pilot. And under operational status, the ground team remains fully mission capable and ready for anything that comes up. Over the horizon, the squadron's going to be participating in a wing search and rescue exercise this coming weekend, which is, I've briefed these before, this is our, our normal way to integrate with other squadrons and, and basically put to test our capabilities and make sure that we're, we're mission-ready for what comes up. We also are anticipating to provide personnel for the Maryland National Guard's Adjutant General Change of Command Ceremony, which is supposed to happen later this month, and as well as the National Memorial Day Parade down in DC. And we are leading planning efforts for a, a group level, again, that's 10 squadrons in the group, emergency services training later in the month of June. Depending on your questions, that's my report for this month.
Anybody have any questions for Captain?
I have one quick question. So I want to back up, because you kind of go through this and gloss over it. So you're telling me Parkland Middle School in Aspen Hill, correct?
It's Rockville.
Yes. That, so there, because that is an aerospace magnet school now. They're transferring their whole squadron to you, under you guys. That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, operational control. So the cadets will still be in the school, they're not going to necessarily be up here with us every week. So basically, our, our staff will become their staff, we'll, we'll exercise a little bit more control over what their activities are, and hopefully get them a little more integrated with the Civil Air Patrol program and what they're already doing at that magnet school.
Awesome. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate your report.
Quick personal note, for those of you that will not be here after tomorrow, I want to say thank you to the council as a whole for giving us a, giving our organizations a voice here within the town. We consider ourselves as part of your emergency services capabilities, and I appreciate this recognition. And I've heard several people up here say, you know, "And whatever comes next for you, if you don't know what that is, you can come see me later." And I can, I can give you some ideas.
Thank you.
Always recruiting, right?
I'm busy.
I heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Captain.
All right. We'll go ahead and move into new business. We'll begin with the PWA for approval. This is for the Mount Airy Medical Eye Center Site Development Plan, S200031. I know this has Barney's name to it, but I'm looking at Tom.
So this, the final site plan was approved at the last Planning Commission meeting. This is a very standard PWA with one exception, only one sort of unusual provision. It's found at the bottom of page five as part or a condition of the approval of the final site plan. The owner developer will agree to, at a future date to be determined by the town, convey a right-of-way or a dedication to the town of suitable width along the property's frontage to Ridge Court for future road widening and sidewalk installation. And that condition of the site plan included that this provision be included in the PWA. Otherwise, the PWA is a standard PWA.
How does, how does something like that typically, how is that going to impact either the, the site or what this agreement is with the town? Does, does this put us at, at any disadvantage or anything, or does this allow us to then widen things, put in, you know, like the sidewalks with handicap accessibility?
Yeah, this is to the benefit of the town.
Okay.
That the town has reserved this to itself to require this at a later date.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any other questions?
I do. I have a question. It's actually on the theme of open space and open space waiver. So if you go to page three, right above number two, there's a statement, it says, "Developers shall be bound by all of the applicable provisions of the zoning and subdivision regulations and all ordinances of the town, whether or not mentioned herein." So I understand this is essentially commercial. So a final site development plan was approved, is that correct for this? So here is my question. The current open space waiver states, whereas under the current APFO, if the town is inadequate in terms of parks and open space, a development may not receive concept plan approval unless granted a waiver. So I don't know whether, I guess, if a concept plan is required for this or not, but my point is, the ordinance says a development, doesn't say what kind of development. I know the assumption is it's residential, but it says a development to include commercial, in my view. That's the, my interpretation. Now, because it's commercial, and one of the requirements for a waiver is if you can provide three acres per 100 people or a fraction thereof, whatever, certainly there's no people, there's no residents. So that's what gets you out of needing the waiver. But I guess what I'm asking is, and it's a question for Tom, is, is my logic clear or not? And I'm only bringing it up because even for this kind of development, do we need something in a file, a, a memo, just as I was referring to? You need to document the granting of a waiver or not? Do you need to document the fact that because this is a commercial property, it is development, but a waiver is not required?
So first of all, remember that APFO review occurs at the concept stage.
Right.
What just got approved was the final. So what we're talking about would be a review that occurred, whenever it occurred, several months ago, a couple of months ago, on concept review. I do agree with the part that you said, the APFO does apply to any development, and thus, for any development to move forward, it requires a waiver. However, this is a purely commercial development. It introduces zero new residents. You look at what the ordinance says in terms of qualifying to request and obtain a waiver, it's, a development's got to provide three acres within it for every 100 residents that the new development seeks to introduce into the town, or a proportion thereof. So if you look at the fact that this development, or any purely commercial or industrial property provides zero residents, its proportion of open space, I'm, must be zero acres, so it qualifies for the waiver. So, you know, that, that would be my interpretation, and has been my interpretation.
Okay. I guess where I'm going with this, and so if a concept plan for this was approved weeks ago or months ago or whatever, formality-wise, I think it's important we start getting into the habit of taking the steps that we say we should really take, dot our i's and cross our t's. Should that concept plan have, have had something that said exactly what you just said, and therefore, a waiver is not required? And that way, yes, it's development, but a waiver wasn't needed, and we've got a memo or a statement that documents that effect. And if you don't think you need it because this was commercial, I think we need to start doing this for the other development types. I mean, I sat through the last Planning Commission meeting where they approved the concept plan for Dennis Kitchens and Bath, and technically, they needed an open space waiver for that property as well. I heard discussions about it, but I never heard it finalized that, yes, we're granting a waiver, and I don't know whether it's being documented or not. So I, I believe it's important to start taking this a little more formally and, and doing the, the appropriate documentation. So I, I'll leave it to the Planning Commission and the town to decide if they think they need to go back and put something in the file in the concept plan for this development that, that states a waiver was not needed. That's up to you guys. That was my point. Thank you.
It's not part of the process. That this, what we're talking about now is approving a PWA for the development that's already been approved by the Planning Commission.
Right.
If you want to talk about process and waiver, that's another discussion, but commercial space is not subject to the open space in the APFO.
Well, okay. I, I think I just heard comments that it kind of is, it's just that it doesn't have people, so that's, that's the rationale why. But you're correct, what we're doing tonight is, is the next step. I'm just bringing up the point that perhaps we need to document decisions on waivers or the need not for them, and that needs to be documented as part of the concept plan, which already happened. Perhaps the town wants to go back and look at that. But I understand that's not what we're doing tonight. I thought the issue was important enough to me to bring it to the surface, and that's all I want to say.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Tom? All right. All those in favor of the approval for the PWA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is the recommendation of award for the Summit Ridge Playground. Barney, it's got your name, so I'll let you talk about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a, an LPPI grant through DNR, and that's what this playground replacement is being funded under. We, the playground as it exists, we, we had done a, you know, review of it, found that it was, you know, needing replacement a few years back. And it's over, I don't know the exact age, over 25 years old.
Mm-hmm.
But we did put this out the bid. We received five bids. We basically gave them the cost. So it wasn't really based on cost, it was based on what, what they proposed. So we reviewed the proposals, came up with VPS Recreation as providing what we considered the, the best playground offered. And that's, there's a picture of it summarized on the second page. There's a large play area with lots of equipment, small play area, new swing sets, and a couple exercises equipment. The exercise equipment probably be rearranged a little bit, but the idea was if, you know, a parent or adult or chaperones coming to take their kids there, if they don't have to be, if they're not too young, that they have to be right underneath them, maybe they can exercise or do something on the outskirts while they're waiting or, you know, there, while the kids are playing.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's what the two exercise equipment are.
All right. So can I just clarify? So did we, when we put out that bid, did we, did you put on the paperwork, like it cannot go over 138 is the, the max?
Correct. Yeah, we, we actually put out 135, but
Okay.
We have a grant that is 180.
No, I'm getting the question. Is that kind of thing?
It's 138. Okay, I'm sorry, 138.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and so with, with the VPS, we itemized all the things that we're looking for, this is what they came up with for the 138?
Correct.
All right. Okay. Any other questions for Barney?
Yes, a quick question. So, so in your discussion, you say, provide entertainment for kids of all ages while prioritizing safety and exercise. It's just a question, is it ADA compliant? Is, and is, is there, is there a requirement the playgrounds have to be ADA compliant or not? Or how does, how does ADA compliance fit in the playgrounds?
So, I'm not, I'm not strong with the background on that, I'll, I'll be honest.
I know someone who's
Somebody would like to talk to it.
Who sponsored that kind of a playground.
I did, before, before Pamela talks, I will say that I did talk to several vendors, and I know one of the questions was the type of surface. The surface that, out at the inclusive playground, obviously that is the preferred. You know, it's a mat, it's not mulch that's separate, you know, it's, it's basically mulch, but it's all like joined, connected. My understanding is that doesn't, it's not a requirement to make the, the ADA requirement for the playground as a desire. The playground mulch can meet ADA, and it costs about 10% of the total equipment in this case. And when you look at the other type of surface, it is more than 100% of the cost of the equipment. There's a very large difference in, so what we did was we were looking at, you know, more equipment rather than trying to get the best surface, but that's, that's why we chose what we did.
So to answer your question, the, the area surrounding the Summit Ridge Playground is ADA compliant. All of the equipment is ADA compliant. Where I don't agree, and this is not for me to decide in the future, I don't believe we should be building new playground structures that have a mulch base. Because while someone with limited mobility may be able to get to the edge of the playground, being able to play in the playground is going to cause an issue. I understand the cost is a lot, a lot more. We accounted for it when we were fundraising for Watkins Play Place, which is why we built the, the mat base that we did. So to answer your question, yes, the area is ADA compliant. The equipment is ADA compliant. The base may be ADA compliant according to standards. I don't know that it's ideal, but maybe it's something that can be added later.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was very educational.
Hey Barney, just one quick question. As we, I guess dismantle the existing playground, could we look at the condition of the swing sets? Because I know that there's been a request several years ago to have a swing set installed up at Wildwood Park Playground. So I'm not sure if, how they're disassembled or taken out, but I would appreciate at least looking at it to see if it can be repurposed, at least one of the sets can be repurposed up there.
So the swing set's about half the age as the rest of the rest of the equipment. The idea is to try to get it all on the same schedule, so replace it. We did put in the requirements that they had to dismantle and salvage the swing set for, if we wanted to, that was an actually request, so we are salvaging that.
Okay, cool, thank you. And I guess a second question, may you go to Katie or you, if you can answer it? Sorry to put you on the spot, Katie. Just getting you ready for the budget hearing, or the budget discussion here. I know the, if anyone out there is listening, that's, the grant that we received for this was a Local Parks and Playground Infrastructure Grant from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. That is a cost share grant, so they
It's a program open space grant.
Program open space, excuse me. Thank you for the correction. It's, but there is a cost share for that, but the DNR Open Space Grant is picking up the lion's share of this repurposing or redevelopment of Summit, Summit Ridge. So I just want to bring that up, that we are saving money where, where we can, applying for grants when we can, and hopefully we will receive them because it is a competitive process. And as I've said before, if we receive a grant, we need to use it, because if we don't use it, we're looked not as in favorable conditions with the state when we apply for another grant. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead for the Summit Ridge Playground. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move to recommendation for award for the Windy Ridge Trail Construction. Barney?
Yep, thank you. So working with the, the Lingor Bike Team with the Ellis's, they would like to utilize the, I know I'm going to say the wrong one, maybe this, this is the LPPI, right, sorry. The $45,000 grant for the more challenging bike trails. They have, they have a lot of the bike trails already started, and they're still constantly working on it. This is the very far northwest corner of the park. It's along the, you know, the steeper slope, and this is to help construct that. They recommended Greenstone Trailcraft that we use them. And looking at it, they do have an existing contract with the state with the Cunningham Falls project that we want to piggyback. And so the idea was that we would piggyback that to help develop that park in, I think it's Zone Two. They have a map that shows all the zones of where, where they're putting these. And I think that might be attached, yeah.
Yep.
On the map, you can see it's at the very top of the page, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3. We'll get as many of those done, but especially the 2.1 and 2.2, like the, those are the steeper slopes there.
Okay.
And so they, they are great at doing what they do, and so that's why we're recommending to go ahead and award this to them to get those, those done, so.
Okay. So this is a $45,000 grant from Local Parks and Playground Infrastructure. Before we continue, do we need to change the wording on this recommendation? Like is this one, is this one incorrect? Does this one need to say POS grant money, the one that we just approved? You're, okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Barney on the Windy Ridge Trails?
And Katie's telling me it's 50,000, but I, I think that's where we, the 5,000 difference is, there's two bridges that we'd like to construct, and I think that was going to pay for the material, and they were going to construct it with the volunteers.
Okay. So it's a $50,000 grant with LPPI.
Quick question, Council President, just maybe Barney or Katie can answer this. By piggybacking on with the Cunningham Falls, are we, we're hopefully saving some funds by piggybacking? You know, it's not, if they, if we had to come them, have them come in, I want to say by themselves, it may cost us more money in the long run?
It certainly could. We don't know for sure.
All right. So piggybacking on a state, existing state contract has the potential to save us money. Also, is this a cost share, or is this? Nope, okay, thank you. That's it, Council President, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of the $50,000 grant, actually just being received from LPPI, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is a truck purchase for Public Works. This is for one F-250. This is a 2021 F-250 from Sentry Ford of Mount Airy for $75,256. You can see, it's been noted that this is not the lowest bid, but it is being purchased from a local, local vendor. And I think Katie made a note down here that we'll have to move some, an additional 30,000?
We already did that.
Oh.
We already did that last time.
Okay. All right, so that was from the budget?
Yeah. And this truck's on a lot.
Awesome. So it's ready to go, it just probably needs to be outfitted the way that we need it? Fantastic. Any additional costs for the outfitting, or is this, does this money cover everything? This money covers everything? Sounds good. Any other questions for, probably Barney, but, no offense, Katie. All right, sounds good. All those in favor of approving a purchase for the F-250 at $75,256, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cool. All right. Next up, just looking ahead and planning ahead, we need to reschedule two town council meetings. These are due to holidays. So the first one is a reschedule of the July Town Council Meeting from July 3rd to July 10th. And then the other one is the September Council Meeting from September 4th to September 11th. So I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that those two council meetings always fall on holidays and we always push them back one week. Thank you very much. And plan on attending September 11th services at the chapel on top of Main Street. Mr. Mayor, you are up. Appointments, reappointments?
Just two reappointments this month, and we can probably do them both at the same time, because we're not going to say no
Nope.
To these people. Ray Miller to be reappointed to the Economic Development Commission, and Beverly Blatchford to be reappointed to the Beautification Commission, please.
All right, no problem. All those in favor of Ray Miller and Beverly Blatchford going to their respective commissions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. We'll go ahead and move into ordinances and resolutions. First up is Ordinance 2023-9. This is the wellhead protection. This is up for adoption. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
All right. We can go ahead and move into discussion, and I will turn this over to Councilmember Munder.
Okay, thank you, Council President. I would like to, maybe Tom can, Tom can help me a little bit on the procedure here. Last month, I requested an extension for 2023-9 because I was attempting to work out some concerns that the applicant and the applicant's engineer had with the current drafting of that. And I've talked with the town engineer, and he gave me a suggestion or idea how to work out their concerns of if the buffer zone was encroaching upon an existing structure or something on the property or the existing land. So I'm not sure how to introduce the red line version, what's the proper procedure for that? Which all the council members have a copy of in front of them, and I actually took special effort to give it to Councilwoman Gilletti a little bit early, so she can't dig me on not giving it to her early.
So I believe it was Council President who moved the approval of the ordinance as introduced, then you seconded. So then what I would do is propose amendments.
Okay.
And then it'd be up to the movement, to the Council President, to accept those amendments as a part of the, his motion.
Okay.
A second, and then discussion vote.
Okay, thank you. Then I propose the following amendment to this. Everything is pretty much the same as was originally drafted, except on page two of five, under 109-4E. It was originally drafted as all wells shall have a 325-foot, a 325-foot buffer zone measured from, or with the wellhead as a center. I had crossed out the, with the wellhead as a center, because that provides them a lot more flexibility of, I want to say, designing the buffer zone around the, around any proposed wells that could accommodate if the newer buffer zone, say, crossed over to a road that was pre-existing or into, I want to say, an existing lot next to it, that they would have no control over where the structures are that have, that has already been placed on that. So it could, gives them pretty much flexibility and to look at how the buffer zone around the wellhead would be designed to accommodate any adverse pre-existing conditions that would hinder it. I do not see it as restrictive on eliminating any wells that are proposed on a property. And I believe as any engineer could tell you, particularly a hydrologist, that a well location is, I believe predetermined by the state where it goes, so it's kind of really hard to predetermined, you know, when you're drawing up or this, where a wellhead would go. So that's the amendment I propose, is striking the letters, the wording with, with the wellhead as a center, and just proposing a 325 by 325-foot buffer zone around a well.
I will accept those amendments.
Do I second it, Tom?
Yes.
Second. Now discussion, I take it?
Sure. Do you have other amendments?
No, sir, I believe that is the only amendment to my knowledge on this ordinance. Everything else was left as is, in, I believe, from the original ordinance.
And really, I mean, the 325 was on there, you just relocated it to a different area?
That's potentially true, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion or comments related to the red line version that we are now taking a look at?
Yes, Council President, I have some comments.
Go ahead.
The first global comment is, all of my comments on this ordinance at previous council meetings remain in effect. I, I still have the same feelings and viewpoints as I've expressed in the past, so I'm not going to reiterate those. But I do want to look at, it's under 109-4 Wells, Item C. And I did some research on this with town staff, and I got a very good overview on this. And Council, Councilmember Munder, I, I appreciate the sentiment of what you're trying to do, but what I learned is, from my interpretation, we're actually handcuffing the town to some degree. We're actually taking away some flexibility that the town has. For example, under C, it says, no water supply well may be dedicated to and accepted by the town unless the well has been proven to yield at least 75,000 gallons per day, 30-day consecutive tests, et cetera, et cetera. So my understanding is, at the time of a, I'm a little fuzzy on this, but when a but when a permit application or an allocation request or whatever gets submitted, the town can determine what kind of tests it wants to run and for how long, and, and, you know, that's all, that's all based on the nature of the wells and what's, what's being proposed for approval. And so, right now, I believe the town has very positive flexibility in that they can dictate what kind of testing should be done and for how long. And you're taking that flexibility away, because you're setting this, this ceiling, if you will, that it has to be proven to yield at least 75,000 gallons per day. You, you might want more gallons per day. I mean, now you're saying that's, that's all you have to, that's all you have to provide. So anyway, the, my research tells me that the system we have in place right now works. It works for the town, it gives us flexibility to do the kinds of tests we think we need, when we need it, depending on the characteristics of the wells in play. And I think this language actually handcuffs us to some degree. The last comment is, the last sentence there, it says, "Town council may waive GPT requirements, da-da-da-da-da, if the lesser yield has been proven achievable and sustainable via the well testing requirements." I don't know what achievable and sustainable means. I don't know if that's defined by MDE somewhere. And in some ways, this can be interpreted as a waiver. It's almost, you know, what, what does that mean? I don't know how you evaluate that. So for all the reasons I just said, plus my previous comments at previous meetings, I, I just don't think this is going to help the town. It's not going to help the town, and I, I'm not going to support it.
That is, you're right, but I respectfully and wholeheartedly disagree with you. Because with my conversations with town staff and several meetings with the Water and Sewer Commission that this went through, it was determined that 75,000 gallons and per day is the preferred amount to make a well economically viable for this town, and particularly with the added cost now of extra water treatment due to PFAS and anything else the EPA might be throwing at us down the road for, I want to say, testing. I believe a 75,000 gallon is achievable, and we should have that as a minimum. And also, the waiver, the town council may waive the GPT requirement is not a waiver. It was brought up to the point at the town engineers urging and the Water and Sewer Commission urging, just as you pointed out, that there may be instances where a well with a lower GPD is needed or is desirable for the town, but it allows the town council to say, okay, we can accept that. But also to basically make sure the well is a viable well for long term that does not cost the town extra money, because there are some literature I've read that's related to some testing the town did, I want to say, early 2000s, for some well exploration over at Gillis Falls and some other wells that we drilled, we found good acceptable water. It probably passed the minimum state standards, which I believe right now is three days of testing. And when we did follow, I believe, our town engineer suggested extended testing regiment, the well output plummeted severely, where until, at a point, it was not a viable well. So that's why the 30-day testing, because our town engineer has stated to me that if a well can survive 30 days of our testing, it's a viable well. It is sustainable well, and it is an achievable well to be viable for the town to take over when a developer or the town needs extra water supply. So I again respectfully disagree with your reasoning, logic, and the things that you have said. So that is it. That's my argument, that why the council should approve this. There are exceptions in it that can help out, and the developers should be able to work around it. It gives waivers and variances, or whatever you want to call it, to make it achievable and to work with somebody. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you, do you mind speaking?
No, I'd like to, actually.
Please.
On that very section.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
See. So first sentence, I would clarify, instead of proven to yield at least 75,000, receives an MDE appropriation of 75,000. So proven to yield might say, okay, we can pump it this far, but that doesn't mean you're going to get an appropriation of that amount.
Okay.
So the appropriation is what we're looking for.
And not necessarily what the 75,000 gallon?
An MDE approved.
Right, okay.
Appropriation, yep. The South Main Street, I think we started pumping at 150 gallons a minute. It went to about 120, ended up with a 75,000 gallon a appropriation, where if you calculate the math, it can pump more than that, but that's all they're going to give you after a bunch of factors.
Right.
Put in. The second sentence, oh, yeah. The second sentence, I'm a little hesitant on the second sentence. "Council may waive the GPD requirements for water supply if it's, just as Steve is saying, achievable and sustainable." Well, if it's 1,000 gallons a day, and it's proven achievable and sustainable, does that mean you're going to approve it? No, I don't think so. We don't want 1,000 gallon a day well, because Brian will be changing wells like every other day.
Okay.
They have to pull these wells, there's maintenance to the wells. That's why we don't want a small well. Even if it's a good residential well, it doesn't mean it's a good municipal well. So that's the reason for, you know, a larger sized well. I did say originally that, you know, if there were two 50,000 gallon wells, no less, you know, I might be okay if two of those put together give you 100,000 with, with a treatment station there, that, you know, that might be okay. So if you, if you change that to allow no less than 50,000 gallons, but again, at the town's discretion or town engineer's discretion.
Okay. And what, so I guess, you know, both of these gentlemen were talking, that they talked to town staff, whatever. What is, can you just explain what, what testing, what testing actually looks like? If we were, like, for example, did we test Harrison-Lashere?
Yeah.
Okay, can you just sort of just walk us through, like, very briefly, what, what occurred, how long was pumping going in gallons per day?
MDE requires a 72-hour test, so it's only three days.
Okay.
If you have a large cavity in the ground and you're pumping it for three days, you're not going to drain that cavity. What you want to know is, over the long term, how fast is that cavity going to recharge itself from the groundwater?
Okay.
So you want to get down to where you drain that out, and then, okay, how fast?
See how it refills, okay?
How long, how much it can sustain.
Okay. Once we do, once we do the three-day test, how, how long before you test again to see if it's recharged? Or does that even occur?
That's where we recommend a minimum 30 days. When we, we drilled 28 wells in Gillis Falls area.
Okay.
Well 6A was our best well. Again, we were somewhere around 150 gallons a minute. After 30 days, we were still like 130 gallons a minute. I, I don't remember the numbers, don't quote me on that, but it was shortly after the 30 days that it took a major drop, and it went down to about 50 gallons a minute.
Okay.
Just shows that you just now drained that, that cavity, and then it wasn't, you know, able to recharge itself that fast.
Okay.
So that's why we say a minimum 30, 30 days.
When you were doing, when you were doing Gillis Falls, and you, and you pumped it in, it was, it was pumping a lot of water, 150 gallons, right? Yep. Were you pumping it straight for 30 days, or you, did you still only pump it for three days? You took a break, and then at the end of that month, you started to pump it again and then realized that it couldn't refill the cavity?
So we did a 90-day test.
You pumped it for 90 days?
And Brian had his guys going and kept, you know, filling the generator on a regular basis.
Okay.
To get through that test.
Okay.
Over Harrison-Lashere, I think we did 30 days, I think.
Okay.
We ran it nonstop.
Yeah, nonstop.
Gillis Falls or Harrison?
All.
Okay.
On all town tests 24/7, wide open.
Okay. And when, when we're talking about the, it needs to have a minimum of 75,000 gallons per day, what is, what is your, what are you looking for? What is your, are you, are you sufficient with 50,000 as a town engineer? Or is 75,000 a, a recommended, from, from your perspective, Brian's perspective, Water and Sewer Commission?
The guy on the wall over there, his, his recommendation was 75,000 gallons a day. We've kind of held, held that, you know, requirement.
Okay.
We, we said, that's, that's the smallest that we want to see. But if they had two 50,000 gallons, again, that are close by, and they're run, tested together at the same time, and they can sustain that, then that might be sufficient, is why I'm saying as, as a possible alternative to 75. I wouldn't go any less than that for sure.
Okay.
But it's up to you if you want to entertain that.
Okay, one last, one last question, Barney. We, we as a town do not have wells that produce 75,000 gallons per day.
So we have one well that is under 75,000 gallons a day. All the others have an appropriation at least that.
And with this statement of a waiver at the end, if we needed to look for an additional well, and it was not pumping 75,000 gallons per day, the town council would have to grant a waiver for the town? To allow it to, to allow that well to be, to be pumped?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what, what happens now? Nothing. If you, you or the town staff says that we're good at 40,000, we're, we're good at 40,000, we can, we can pump that?
That's what we'd have to determine.
Okay.
Is it worth the maintenance versus, you know, installing that and developing that well?
Okay, all right. Thank you for answering, thank you. I appreciate your time. All right, any other questions?
I was going to say.
So I'm going to, I've said this before, and I'm going to reiterate it. If our town's subject matter expert, Dick Swanson, felt there needed to be a change to our wellhead protection, the ordinance would have originated out of water and sewer. This ordinance was drafted and introduced specifically to hinder the development of the Beck property, and I will not support it no matter what amendment you make to it.
Council President, another comment. This is, this is also where I was going. So I did not want to invoke Mr. Quinn's name, but since his name was invoked, and when I did my research, he was, he was a source for my research. But listen to that conversation that we just had, and all of the, I'm not saying this is an art. It's certainly a science, but there's a little bit of expertise to how you do this and judgment, how long you want to pump, and all that kind of thing. My suggestion is, I don't think we should be putting this and locking it in in ordinance. Now, I think the town, if we don't have it, and it sounds like we don't have it, the town should write a procedure or a guide that talks about testing and how to do testing, and what the considerations are, and how long you pump, and watch out for this and that, and put that in a protocol or a procedure, so you've captured the institutional knowledge of Barney and our, and our water, our water quality and maintenance folks. And that way, you have it documented. You've got a procedure, it's flexible, you can continue to do what you're doing. But you don't need to lock this in with wording in this ordinance, where already tonight, we, we just questioned a couple things and started adding some new words. So that is the approach I would take. I would, and again, Councilmember Munder, I, because I can sympathize. I know what goes into preparing ordinances, and some are supported and some are not, and it's a lot of effort. But I think the best solution for this is to address this in a town protocol or policy. And that way, you've got it documented, and you don't need this here. That's my final comment.
Okay.
Councilman, I would actually probably take it a step further, put it as an ordinance, so that the gentlemen that are sitting here can say, hey, if it doesn't meet this, then we're not going to use this well. They have, Brian has vast amounts of knowledge with Barney about the wells, how to pump wells, what to look for. It may sound like, you know, but they're using their expertise to help make better judgments about what, what a well can look like, what it, what it can sustain. And I would probably actually put it as an ordinance, what, what these two gentlemen have as far as knowledge goes, and how to, how to know if a well is really being productive. But that's, that's for another day, I apologize. Were there any other, Ms. Councilwoman Gilletti?
Thank you. So I have a couple questions. A lot of people have already asked the questions I had, but one of my questions was, I had asked Councilman Munder why he brought this forth, and I think you told me it was, you found something in the 2013 master plan about the 20, 325?
Yes, yes, Councilwoman, I believe.
Okay, so, because I didn't want to speak out of turn, thank you. So my question would be, we're close to finishing the master plan. We've still got a few meetings. Where, what would you estimate about 85? I mean, Streets and Roads spoke a year and a half in front of the master plan meeting. So are we pretty, within the next few months, six months? I don't want to put you on the spot, but my question would be, if it's in the master plan, then why aren't we waiting to do this in the master plan? And are these changes in that portion of the master plan? I don't want to put Master Planning Commission on the spot.
I can answer that, or maybe John. I know we have already covered the natural resource element of the master plan.
So is this in that?
I believe it may have been taken out, because we were anticipating this ordinance would pass, and we were taking care of it. I just cannot recall correctly if we left it in there for future, or were we, or did we vote to take it out?
So can I just direct my question to you? What do you, in your opinion, how far are we, how close are we to finishing the 2023 master plan?
Well, the intention is to try to get it finished by the end of the year, so hopefully by...
At the worst case.
I think it was November.
Yes, in the next.
January, having a final adoption.
Yes, within the next, three to six months, okay.
I think, like you're saying, maybe we need to quantify that and have Planning Commission make some recommendations in there.
Right.
I don't know exactly where that is, I don't remember if we took it out, or.
Yeah.
That's my question, why are we making this ordinance right now, right here, right now? If it was in 2013, and we have been working for, what, two years on 2023? I want to say it was maybe a year or two, at least a year ago, that I testified in front of that body for the master plan for the Streets and Roads. So that's my question would be, why aren't we putting it in that process, since that process is going on? Again, love the lawyer, but I just, I'll say it again. I don't think we need to keep putting things in ordinances when we've already got a process in place. And then my other question, I was sitting here doing some research. Where, you literally pulled the 325 out of the 2013, because I've been on the EPA's website, and I don't see EPA guidelines on a, like a minimum. Maybe you guys know that, you or Brian. But did it, did it come out of the master plan?
It came out of the master plan. It was also referenced in the master plan that the EPA recommends that 325-foot buffer.
Okay, that's where it said in the 2013.
That's where it came from, from the EPA.
All right, that's all I've got.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. There's no other comments? We'll go ahead for a vote. Did you want to make any comments?
I'm good.
All right. We're looking at the red line version. All those in favor of ordinance 2023-9 with the proposed amendments?
Can I hold you for a second? Just one second. I mean, Barney had a couple things that he suggested there, and I don't, I don't know if, I mean, he talked about putting in the MDE appropriation as opposed to the proven yield. And that's, that's a significant change.
I mean, I'm willing... I mean, I'm willing to, hey, Tom, what would be the process? I mean, I'm willing to accept that as the author and sponsor of this ordinance. He received the MDE approv-, you know, approved appropriation of at least, of 75, of at least 75,000 gallons. Or if Barney's, you know, if that's, if Barney and Bron-, and not to put our Public Works Director on the spot, if that's a number that they believe is achievable or should it be a little bit lower, but it MDE appropriate, you know, approved appropriation from MDE wording would be good enough for me on this one.
If you want to make a recommendation for an amendment, then you, then you can say that you would like to make a recommendation. And then if someone seconds it, then we can vote on that one. If not, we got to vote on this one.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I'm, I may be the only one. I'm, I'm confused. So what was originally introduced, okay, and what I understood was initially moved, was the ordinance as introduced, which contained no subsection E. Then there were the red lines that I'm not sure, you know, what happened to them and whether they ever all got in, rolled into the motion. I don't think they did.
When we originally.
There was an amendment to one of the red lines that got accepted. So my suggestion would be to roll through the ordinance, uh, and where are the amendments? Like, is what ordinance are you voting on? I'm not clear on that.
So we had the original one.
Right.
Okay, that was introduced by me.
Okay.
Seconded by him.
Right.
He wanted to do the amendments, the red line version.
Okay.
Which then I accepted. He seconded those. So the whole discussion has been on the red line version.
Okay. As long as that's clear.
Yes. Barney, Barney said some things that the mayor is now pointing out and I guess perceivably asking Councilmember Munder if he would like to introduce those amendments. At that point, someone could second, I believe. Maybe it goes back to the originator, which would be me. And then we would, we would vote. I'm, to be honest, I'm not confused. I know where we are.
That's good. Enough for me.
So if, do you, are you still?
I'm with you. Um, red line version is what you guys are voting on.
Yes.
Barney had an amendment to the red line version.
I think it was more of a suggestion.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. I just don't want to put Barney on the spot. Like, I made an amendment. He didn't make an amendment. He's offering a suggestion.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll get Barney clear.
And that was to add the MDE, the words MDE approciation, appropriation uh, of at least 75,000 gallons per day. So, and I would ask you all to consider that.
I make a motion then to, sorry.
So it's Jason's motion.
Okay.
Does Jason accept the amendment as a part of his motion?
So we, I think what Carl was saying was he was going to read the, the amended motion just so that everyone, for, for the record. And then I would.
Okay.
No?
I thought Carl started with, I want to make a motion, but.
Oh, no, well, okay, maybe I, let me just say, I would like to add the wording.
Subsection C then would read what?
Subsection C.
No water supply well.
Okay, no water supply well may be dedicated to and accepted by the town unless the well has received an MDE-approved appropriation permit, if, if that's what they're called. Is that the correct terminology of that permit? Of at least 75,000 gallons per day.
I accept.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Yeah, you can proceed to vote on the amended.
Okay.
The amended of the amended.
Yeah.
Of the amended, yes.
All right. All those in favor, this is hilarious. All those in favor of ordinance 2023-9, the wellhead protection, whatever the latest version was, that Councilmember Munder just said. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Next up is ordinance 2023-10. This is to adopt the tax rates for fiscal year 2023-2024. This is also up for adoption. I will introduce. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Reed seconds. Any discussion?
I'll just tell you, uh, nothing has changed. Point 166 to constant yield.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 2023-10 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Next up is ordinance 2023-11. This is to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2023-24. This is up for adoption. Um, we have some.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think Holly missed. Did you get everybody the vote on that?
Yes.
She said yea.
Yes. Yes. Three yea's, two nays.
Yep. Okay. Um, yeah. Yep. I will introduce. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilwoman Galetti, seconds. Um, we have a couple of notes, uh, for the, uh, budget. Katie, do you want to, do you want to go through this or do you want me to? I can read the note. If you have changes or clarifications, you can. Or do you want to do your thing?
I mean, I can explain it.
Okay, go for it.
Okay. Um, so I sent an email to the council to ask if we could add 70,000 to the police or public safety, um, police vehicles for the upfitting. We purchased two vehicles this, in the current fiscal year. Um, and we're hoping to have them up, upfit it, but unfortunately due to the lead times and when we got them, they will not be finished until, one won't be finished until August. One will hopefully be finished in July, but that makes them a fiscal year 24 purchase. So next month I will introduce a budget amendment to pull the up, upfitting funds out of the budget. And then we just need to add it to the 24 budget. And then, um, it's 70,000 because it's 35,000 each.
Sounds good.
Basically, Katie, what would, your suggestion or what we're doing is we're just.
Removing and adding.
Removing it from this current fiscal year and putting it into next fiscal year. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments for the budget?
I have a few comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I think a lot about everything I need to vote on and I always, I mean, I thought a lot about this over the weekend. Of course, I participated in the budget workshop. And I think there's a lot of good in this budget. And I, I said it in public before and I'll say it again to the mayor, I really appreciate, we've put $500,000 in for a police station. And I think that's a great move, a great start. Recall, we had a police station workshop. I had proposed an ordinance that wanted to move $500,000 out of the capital reserves immediately. And then thereafter, 350,000 each year, commit to that. To me, that was an opportunity for the council to really put a stake in the ground that were serious about safety infrastructure. And I think we had that opportunity in this budget and we just didn't take that last step. In my view, we could have done it. There were some wants kind of projects that we could have forestalled that would have given us the 300,000 or so. We could have made, we could have made a stake in the ground. So I'm just, I'm disappointed. My view is, as a council member, and I've talked to my constituents, a budget should prioritize safety, health, and quality of life. That's what a budget should be prioritized to. And I just think this current budget still has some, some wants projects that are getting prioritized over needs. So, um, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm, I, I am disappointed. There is a lot of good in this budget, but because of what I just said, I, I will not support this budget tonight. I also think we could have put some money in here for PFAS. I think we're being a little bit too reactive and not enough proactive enough on PFAS. I know we have money in here for treatment systems. Talking, learning about the Water and Sewer Commission. I know they're working on an initiative to have some sort of a program where, um, citizens could get kind of a credit or a partial reimbursement for a, a PFAS filtration system of some sort for the residents. Um, I believe that's a general concept. And if that goes forward, that, that could be a bit pricey. That could be, you know, in the 50 to 75,000 dollar range perhaps. So again, I just think we should have tried to wrap that into this budget as well. So again, it's, it's a fine budget. It's just not, I can't do it. I, I thought about it. I can't do it. It doesn't prioritize for the citizens' safety, health, and quality of life. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
There is money in here for PFAS.
Yes, I understand. Well, for the, for the treatment, I know there's like the 2 million and then there's money in there for the.
For the testing.
For the testing, which I believe I brought to the fore at the budget meeting because that wasn't, that was getting overlooked. So, so I'm ple- I'm pleased that's there. Yes.
That there definitely is money in here for the, to remedy the PFAS.
Right. But I was talking about a program that I think is in the conceptual phase of like an assistance program to citizens and their residents, so.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Appreciate your comments. 500,000 is in there for the police station. That's more than enough money to get us through an entire year of getting a bond bill if we need one to pay for potentially a $6 million project and make the payments. I don't know why you would want to see more money in there. And I do think that we can walk and chew gum. People stay in this town because they like the small town charm. They like the fact that we have features in town that are, uh, community-based. And I don't think we have to give everything up to accomplish the goals of safety and, uh, and be able to continue doing everything that we need to do in town. Again, 500,000, it would probably cost in a year about 350,000 to get a $6 million bond uh, if we need to. That's enough money to find property, buy property, get the ball rolling on building a police station and make that, those decisions. By voting against this, I think what you're doing is, is taking that, that opportunity away from, from yourself and being able to get out there and actually get some stuff done. But, you know, hopefully it'll pass. As, as far as PFAS goes, we do have the money in there. We're hoping to get the grant. We know that we have to address it. We, and I greatly appreciate the fact that you brought up the testing. We would have found the money, but it's nice to have it in there cleanly and get the, uh, testing continued throughout the year. And as far as the Water and Sewer Commission working on a program, uh, they are working on it. And I think that we have the time to get that right. We're going through a water bill cycle now. And as long as we have something, uh, lined up prior to the next water bill cycle, I think we're addressing PFAS. So I think we're addressing the issues, um, but, you know, vote as you will. And, uh, just rest of the council, remember it, it is a, it's a budget, so it has to pass for one. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, Mayor. Yes, you're okay. Yes. The thumbs up is a go. Brian left, so he can't do his thumbs up. All right. Um, my only, my only quick comment, um, would be that, um, it is, the, the budget is an opportunity for, I think, the council members sitting up here, um, an opportunity to maybe get, get their programs, uh, funded. I know I've gotten a, a few programs funded myself. And it's a, it's a give and take. Sometimes you get things, sometimes you don't. At the end of the day, did we, um, through that workshop process, do the best that we could with what we had working? There are some things that, uh, obviously I would have, uh, liked to have different. But I think at the end of the day, uh, we are providing, uh, the town an opportunity to continue moving forward for the 2023, 2024, uh, fiscal year. I think we're, you know, I said this once, uh, that our, our reserves are, are not where they are. I think, uh, we should have made some different decisions in, in those regards. But so be it. I, you can't go back and, and change those things. You can only look forward. So, Mayor and, and town staff, thank you for all your work on the budget and, and the council members. I thought it was a very good workshop. We moved, uh, very quickly, very diligently, working with each other, working on those numbers. Uh, so I appreciate your time. Any other comments before we vote?
Council President, may I? I'll try and keep.
Sure, you're fine.
Agreed. I'll agree with most of what you have indicated and what you've just said. The reserves unfortunately have been, um, I want to say, they are not where they should be and it has been a long ti-, a long-term problem. So hopefully we can correct that moving forward. I think we, we will just take some interesting choices coming up. But as for the budget, I kind of find it unusual for people that vote against it that say public safety and quality of life issues are what people want. Uh, there's public safety in this budget. We're talking about a police station. We've doing the best we can for our poli-, our wonderful police force. Quality of life for me is a lot, as the mayor said, community-based programs, community things, fields, and trails. Particularly trails. We're getting ready to complete the Rails to Trails East to have it at a hard surface, for it to be completely ADA compliant in my view, that if anybody in a wheelchair or a walker or has mobility issues can walk from Watkins Park to downtown or walk around Watkins Park and get downtown here. So that is a little bit confusing. It has quality of life issues or quality of life pro-, programs in it. So I'm going to be voting for this budget. Unfortunately, as you said, there could have been other changes, give and take. I would have loved to seen some more money for EDC pro-, programs because the downtown is finally beginning to revive. It's getting there. Uh, we do need some more things related to attractions and to get people down here from surrounding areas. I believe town staff is doing an excellent job getting that done and we'll see where it goes. I would have just liked a little bit more money for EDC, but the budget is where it is. So I'm going to vote, vote for it. Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick comments. I mean, just to piggyback on what they've all said and I'll make it, and I will make it brief. We all want what we want and we all look at the same things. We look at safety. We look at all that. That's what we're here for. That's what we're doing. I just want to make one comment that I wanted, and anybody that wants to criticize the traffic circle, I'm, I'm pretty sure I haven't seen you volunteer on Streets and Roads. So you're welcome to come join us. Um, Councilmember Washabaugh, we've been talking about that for about four years when I was just a little commission member under her. And I want to point out that when we get a federal grant that specifies what can be done, we can't just go, who are the idiots putting in a circle? Let's go do it, put it in our water. Go back and watch council meetings for the last year. Go back and watch Streets and Roads like two, three, four years ago. I'm, I guess we're going back now. And you will find out that things are being done according to regulations and rules and what can be done. So I want to commend our staff again for all the time they spent to appropriate those funds properly according to the federal guidelines to get us the things we need for safety. And everything that can be done is being done by this body. And I want to thank everybody for, we did have a productive workshop. We all talked about what we wanted and what we want to do. And as we all know, any of us up here who have been federal or state employees, I guess we're an employee of town now, even though it's a volunteer job technically, you know that a budget has to pass for a government to continue to operate. So that's what we're talking about here. Maybe I want more, maybe she wants more, maybe they all want more, but we're talking about productively working together to let our staff and our government to continue to operate. So I just want to thank. So I just want to thank the mayor and staff for how much work you did put in to making a budget. And we did talk about what we wanted and what we didn't want and what changes we wanted. And you get what you get and you work together and that's, that's what, that's how it works. That's all I got to say.
So the only thing I'll say is, when I first introduced the budget amendment to add $2 million, it was incredibly aggressive and out of reach. But my point behind it was to bring the need for a police department front and center. So my comment is, thank you, Mayor, for putting $500,000 in the budget and moving the project forward. So.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. All those in favor of ordinance 2023-11, this is to adopt the budget for 2023, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed?
Nay.
Next is ordinance 2023-12. This is a budget amendment to add $13,500 for police vehicles and upfitting. We just put it and moved it, so I will make a motion for withdrawal. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is ordinance 2023-13. This is a budget amendment to reallocate ARPA funding. This is for adoption. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Galetti.
Can I just make the first comment?
Absolutely.
It has to do with, I see a big thing on here. I want to make sure people understand, because I went down to page two, number nine. I want to make sure people understand that when we have a fiscal year, and hopefully everybody here understands that, we don't go from January to December. We have a fiscal year. So if we don't spend the money or it's not going to be completed, as Katie talked about the truck or some things that have come up, it has to be reallocated. So a lot of this is reallocating based on things being completed in the next year. So I want to clarify, any questions anybody has about the Main Street Roundabout? It has to do with what's going to be completed by July 1st and then obviously July 1st, we're going to finish it by the end of July. You're ignoring me. I was told a shovel would go in the ground April and I'm going to be down there tonight and you may or may not see me with a shovel because it's after midnight, but you know, if I'm in somewhere else in the world, it might be yesterday. So I just want to point out, if you had any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them, but I do know the details on number nine. I'd just like to make this brief if we could.
Thank you. All right. Any other quick comments?
A quick comment. So I was having a question about the, moving the money for the wastewater treatment lab, plant laboratory upgrade. So I got an outstanding tour today of the laboratory and the entire treatment system. I even got to go see some water stations. So anyway, by making that visit and seeing what's planned for the laboratory upgrade and what the needs are, I clearly agree that that work needs to be done and I support moving some money to make that happen. So this is all good to me.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of ordinance 2023-13, this is to reallocate ARPA funding, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, for ordinances and resolutions is ordinance 2023-14. This is to amend Elections Chapter 10, Section 10-11. This is to permit a person who has received but not yet returned an absentee ballot to cast a provisional ballot at the polling place if the absentee ballot is not received prior to the closing of the polls. This is up for adoption and it needs to pass as an emergency ordinance so that it takes effect for tomorrow. I will introduce, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Galetti, seconds.
Your call.
Is there any discussion? We can also have Dick come on up and further explain anything if anyone has any comments or questions. Sounds good. All right. So as an emergency, it needs to pass 4-1. All those in favor of ordinance 2023-14, I'm not going to read all that again, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move into the reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not going to steal everyone's thunder because, but I am going to touch on some things that I really had a good time at and kudos to our liaisons and to the commissions who put together these events. On April 15th, I attended the Safe Driving Event in conjunction with the Streets and Roads Commission. I know you'll talk more about it, but I'll tell you, it was a good time, very well attended and very interesting things to watch. And I enjoyed driving that golf cart with the beer goggles on, so.
I'm pretty sure that video is on Facebook somewhere.
It is on Facebook. And then I went flying afterwards. It was great. So on April 29th, unfortunately, the bulk trash pickup was canceled due to weather where, Steve, I think you'll touch on the fact that we're going to reschedule it as a curbside pickup. PFAS update, results of the quarterly testing last quarter came in showing some wells tested higher and some tested lower in levels of PFAS, as well as a long-range plan has been developed by the staff. The Water and Sewer Commission and staff are looking at potential programs to offset the costs of citizens who are concerned about PFAS and would like to buy a personal filter. Urban Renewal Authority made it through the legislature and also got signed by the governor. So we now have Urban Renewal Authority, which is another arrow in our quiver to deal with properties that are dilapidated and nothing is happening to them. The Mount Airy Senior Task Support, MASS, has now conducted three listening sessions in regard to obtaining a designation as an age-friendly community. If anyone is interested in becoming part of MASS, please contact Town Hall and leave a message for myself, the mayor. Also, the MASS group is providing a shuttle again. It's not as extensive as it was last year, but it goes from the senior center to the farmer's market. And you'll be able to see advertisements on that to know when you can catch that, Wednesdays of the month, you can catch that. Again, touching on this and then Lynn can follow it up. The Flatiron Task Force held a major cleanup of the Flatiron Building this past Saturday. They cleaned that thing thoroughly, emptied out all the old furniture that was rotting away and carried a lot of things away. The main thing I'll report on, which I don't think Lynn knows yet, is that the Historical Society footed the bill for the tipping fee of $115 to bring all that stuff up to the landfill. So thank you, Historical Society and the Flatiron Task Force for that. Town elections are tomorrow. I want to say thank you to all of you who are running. I greatly appreciate it. I know that campaigning is difficult. It seems like whenever I run, it's very difficult. Thank you, Pam, for keeping my campaigns very interesting. So anyway, it's great to have people running. I hope everybody gets out there and votes tomorrow and congratulations to whoever wins and I look forward to working with you. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Next up, Councilwoman Reed, Parks and Recs.
Yep. The Recreation and Parks Board met on April 20th. I am not going to go through a lot of information related to the last meeting, but I am going to share a success story, not only of the Recs and Park Board, but for the mayor, town council, and the volunteer group organizing the skate park. Phase three of Watkins Play Place, the ADA-compliant playground at Watkins Park, came in under budget. I was able to rally the support of the mayor and town council to move some of that playground money over to the skate park. The volunteer folks who have been fundraising for that park ran into some problems, just like the rest of us have with inflation and fundraising being slowed down because of COVID. So we were able to move some of that playground money over to the skate park so that Phase One of the skate park can be installed, I believe, by the end of the fiscal year. So we're super excited about that. We, you know, had we not come together as a team and made that decision, the pump track could have been delayed another year. So we're super excited. So that is my, my final gift. Barney, Katie, Ashley, Mayor, Town Council, thank you for the support on that and thanks for everything that you did to make it happen.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll move to Councilmember Munder with EDC and planning.
Okay, I'll start off with EDC. EDC meeting was held on April 26 at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. They discussed normal EDC business. I would just like to go over some of the upcoming events here in downtown. So please, anyone still listening or will watch this later, please take note. I would like to say the boot scoot and line dancing here on Main Street was a huge success and like a large age rain and drew from a wide area. So they're anticipating doing that again sometime, maybe just not without the street closure. Would like to, as I said, here are some upcoming events. The Mount Airy Cars and Coffee has returned for pretty much the summer and early fall. It's second and fourth Sunday from 8:00 to 11:00 up in the municipal lot, up behind the VFW and by Chewy. So please, if you're just driving by, stop by, park your car, there'll be coffee and pop the hood and meet some of the town residents that are interested in cars. We had the Main Street cleanup on 4/22, which put some decorations in the flowers and the flower beds. As I said earlier, the boot scooting on Main Street had 150 participants. Some upcoming MAMSA event. The Spring Fair is May 14th. Please check the website for any more things. There is a cornhole tournament at the Spring Fair. The farmer's market is returning again this year, beginning May 31st, runs through September 27th. There are approximately 30 vendors. They will, it will be on Wednesdays, 3:00 to 7:00 PM at the municipal lot by the pharmacy and the rail yard. And I believe there has been an agreement worked out with liquidity that people attending the farmer's market can, excuse me, park in the, in their lot, but please stay there, go to the brew pub, have a beer or eat some dinner there or, but please, if you're not planning on staying around downtown, please go to the farmer's market and make the spots available for the patrons. There is a sidewalk chalk art contest, July 15th. There's another upcoming wine and cheese event on Main, August 17th. And the Annual Oktoberfest will be held on September 23rd. Important note, there is a MAMSA volunteer night at the Ford County's Lions Carnival upcoming. And let's see, what else? There are several MAMSA restaurant fundraisers. 10% of sales on 5/23 at Memories Charcoal House from 5:00 to 9:00, 717 J&amp;P Pizza and 8/28. I know it's a little bit outside of Mount Airy town boundaries, but the owners of Walker's Tap and Table are now Mount Airy residents. So please go over to Glenwood and support Walker's Tap and Table on 8/28 where some of this, 10% of this sales will, if I remember correctly, will be, will come back to MAMSA. That is my report for EDC. Excuse me, one other thing. The Chamber of Commerce of Mount Airy is having an upper deck breakfast, May 10th from 8:30 to 10:00. Cost is $10 a person. It's a buffet style. As I said, that concludes EDC now planning. Held April 24th, 2023, there were several, I want to say, plans that were approved. As I said earlier, the, excuse me, the earlier one with the PWA for the Mount Airy Medical Eye Center was approved. The Twin Arch Business Park Lot 14, which was amended plat, which was approved. Concept site development plan for Twin Arch Business Park Lot 14A is approved also. The Dennis Subdivision, which is located at the old 1010 South Main Street property was approved, which will consist of five housing units of approximately various lot sizes. If I remember correctly, the lot sizes will range from 7,000 to 10,000 square feet in a clustered-style development. There was approximately a half an acre of open space deeded to the town because they met the requirements set forth in the APFO. There was a discussion of 2023-8. And I just want to also remind people that the, that there will be an upcoming public charrette related to the Beck property at the American Legion at 801 Prospect on May 20th from 1 to 5, May 22nd, 6 to 10, and May 23rd, 2 to 6, and 7 to 9. The two events on May 20th and 22nd are the exact same event. We do encourage people to attend both if they want to sit at different tables and have various comments on different aspects of the plan. Also, if you want, bring your kids. Hopefully they can join in and tell the planners of the Beck property what they would like to see in the, in any potential development there. The events on May 23rd will be, I want to say, the reveal or how the plan has incorporated the suggestions at the charrette. And that concludes my report for the Planning Commission. I would also like to say thank you to town staff. Hopefully I will be serving another four years after tomorrow. So thank you again. Stay tuned for the, on the town website for the next Planning Commission date. There were some challenges scheduled, only one for June. So hopefully it will be scheduled for June 12th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Councilmember Demoto Recycling, Sanitation, Main Street Safety Task Force.
Okay, thank you. We last met on March 15th. A couple noteworthy items. The Downtown Recycle Center has been redone. You probably noticed the old structure's been removed and a new enclosure has been installed. That's a positive move. The bulk trash event that was scheduled for this past Saturday, April 29th, was canceled due to inclement weather. And as the mayor mentioned, I think the town is pursuing a curbside pickup option. And they're, I know they're working on scheduling that and to have that, that service available to us within this year. I think they're trying to make it happen as soon as is practicable. Our next meeting will be held on May 17th at 7:00. The next yard waste pickup is this Saturday, May 6th. Main Street Safety Task Force, the task force has been meeting on or about a monthly basis pretty much. We last met in April. The focus of our meeting in April was, we had a brainstorming session to identify tactical and strategic next steps for continuing safety on Main Street as well as broadening some of those lessons learned and successes to other parts of the town. We prepared a draft report detailing all of the accomplishments over the past year since the task force got set up last March and identifying the future plans. And we will be looking forward to presenting that to the mayor and having a discussion with the mayor on how he would like to proceed with that initiative. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Galetti, Streets and Roads, Beautification, Flatiron.
Real quick, do you have a task force meeting set up this week?
It is a tentative meeting, I believe, for this Thursday, May 4th. I need to confirm that, but that's, that is the tentative plan, correct?
All right. I'm going to go with beautification. They met on April 18th. I want to touch on something Councilmember Munder brought up. It's already been in the works. There are swings that Public Works has and we get, we got a request from a program that brings kids from a special ed program up here during their school day and they go to Wildwood. So Public Works should be installing those swings. I didn't get by there yet this week, if not already. And there was a Girl Scout Project, May 23rd, they met at Vest Pocket Park. And Brownie Troop 04079 planted annuals, perennials, and a tree to create a new pollinator garden and they finalized their budget for fiscal year 23, '24. The next meeting, I didn't write down, but it's always the third Tuesday of the month, 7:00 here at Town Hall. Anybody wants to volunteer, let us know because they get those meetings over quickly. Flatiron Task Force met on April 10th and I'm going to read the notes from the task force chairman, his update since he's not here. I told him I'd read that. So the mayor touched on this. There was a cleanup Saturday at the Flatiron Building and I was blown away. It started at 8:00. and I was blown away. It started at 8:30. When I got there at 9:30, they had already cut up the furniture, loaded up a trailer, and hauled it to the dump. So thank you so much to the task force members. The mayor was there. Councilmember Demoter, Councilmember Munder came by. I was there. And I want to say thank you to some of the candidates, and I want to also say thank you to Nikki for coordinating it, and Tim Washaball for having that trailer, 1.5 ton of debris, loaded within an hour, cut up with a sawzall, and shaken and moved it and got it to the dump, which is amazing. Then we went, we came in, we were the second shift. We came in. Thank you, Mark Mignone, for climbing up in the windows like a monkey with me and cleaning those windows. They were like, we can't reach the windows, and we both just went, okay, and climbed up. So thank you to the ladies who did a fantastic job. You go in there, it's clean, it looks good, it smells good, mind-boggling. And then, two grant applications have been prepared on behalf of the town, and one is for $10,000 from Preservation Maryland Heritage Grant Fund. Another one is $100,000 from the Maryland Historic Trust Capital Preservation Grant, award announcements anticipated June, July timeframe. So as you can see, thank you, council, for approving to let them move forward, because they are moving forward. And they are in the process of completing three more additional grant applications on behalf of the town. The due dates are July, so three more grants with the due date of July to here in September, October. Starting in, the plan is set up to move forward with opening the Flatiron Building, open houses, staffed by volunteers, Saturdays from 12 to 4 during the summer months, beginning around June 10 through August 25, so stay tuned. They do have a page on Facebook, and it will be managed by volunteers from the Historical Society and Flatiron Task Force. If you have any ideas, you're welcome to contact them and join. They're always looking for volunteers. That was my task force. Streets and Roads. Streets and Roads didn't have a meeting in April. It's every other month, so again, everybody that's coming forth, not here now, but, and coming and getting invested, and coming and getting interested in the town, we would love to have you on our commissions, because there's openings, and we need volunteers. So there are the other odd month, but I have to talk about what the mayor talked about. We had a teen driving awareness event, April 15, and it was fantastic. 150 kids were signed up, a huge crowd. It started to rain towards the end, but that didn't deter the crowd. I have to say thank you to the Carroll County Sheriff. They brought the dog, which is a not-biting dog, so it was able to be near the children. The very dog we talked about last month, it was the one we want, the not bite, and he showed what the dog does, and it was amazing and really effective. And I have to say thank you, thank you, to Corporal Brooks, because he stood there the whole time with a line at the car, standing there showing that, what they would go through if they got pulled over. And also the fire company, because they did a demonstration of, they had two cars crash together, and they showed how they get people, extract people out of a car. But also, thank you to Lucy Regal from Streets and Roads that worked for about a year on this, and I cannot, I'd be remiss in not thanking Sherri Cates from State Farm, because she was really the push behind it, and it was successful, and they've already scheduled it for next year, and they have a date. So they will let us know as time progresses. I have to point out, the council workshops for any candidates and current council members, the workshops that we approved to do on team building, they will be, we found out today, one of the dates had to change because of a charrette. These workshops have to be booked with the trainer like four to six months in advance. So we lucked out today in a Zoom call with the mayor, thank you, mayor, that when we realized there's a charrette on one of those dates, we were able to get the following date, which was the only date available in the month of June. So they will be Tuesdays, May 16, May 30, June 6, from 6:00 to 8:30 right here on team building, specifically Dynamic Communication, Conflict Candor and Trust, Optimizing the Council Dynamics, and Rules of Engagement Strategy. So we look forward to that. And I do have to say one more thing. Urban renewal. Our bill was introduced by Senator Reedy and received full support from our Carroll County delegations. We have to thank Carroll County delegation, because urban renewal was attempted prior to me even getting on council. And thank you to our state representatives from District 5 for their support. We needed the Frederick delegation's support. I testified in front of the Frederick delegation, who voted for unanimous support. Thank you to them. And thank you to the mayor and town administrator for their support in this really important initiative the town's been trying to get. I traveled to Annapolis during this past session to testify in front of the Senate Education, Energy, and Environment Committee for support of state bill 0313, which is granting urban renewal authority to the town of Mount Airy. They voted unanimously to support it. The mayor traveled to Annapolis and testified to the House Environment and Transportation Committee. Then they voted unanimously to support their corresponding House Bill 0561. So thank you, mayor. Thank you to our town administrator for driving us both and providing us all of the information needed to successfully testify. It was approved by the House and Senate, and just last week, signed by the governor. So we got it. And I want to say good luck to all the candidates in the election tomorrow. Thank you, Councilmember Reed, Council President Poyer, for all of your service to the town. I'm sure you're not going to go away, because it's in your blood, volunteering and helping. So I look forward to seeing you around town. On that note, good luck to all the candidates in the election tomorrow, and I look forward to working together cohesively with our new council. That concludes my report.
All right, I have Water and Sewer and Mount Airy Sustainability on that note. Unfortunately, due to my spring break with Howard County Public Schools, I was not able to attend the April 5 meeting. But just looking at the PFAS update, I believe the mayor mentioned the water filter. That will be a credit, so that was one of the things that was discussed, as well as they reported on a draft ordinance for the well protection that came to us, obviously. Dick mentioned a legislative update, Senate Bill 225 and House Bill 499, where it would require municipal wastewater treatment plants to test for PFAS. This got withdrawn from the House, so it may likely come back, but we'll keep an eye on that. And I believe the other business was the budget, which was passed out. There is a meeting on Wednesday here at 7:00 PM. Unfortunately, with sustainability and the weather, the Green Fair was canceled at the last minute. Hopefully, we'll be able to put things back in order. We really wrap that around with Earth Day, and trying to coordinate Earth Day events around that day is very difficult, because every municipality, every city is doing something for Earth Day, and so we'll see if we go back, but we'll look for a future date here coming up. And that concludes my report. Oh, yeah, go ahead really quickly.
Really quickly, I forgot to put one thing in my Planning Commission report. Elections were held at the last meeting for new chair and vice chair. Bill Butts is the new chair of the Planning Commission, and the new vice chair is Ralph Ghent. So thank you for your service, and that concludes my second report for Planning Commission. Thank you.
Tom, Town Attorney, report.
Briefly, just a reminder that on May 8 is the rezoning application hearing. This is a different type of proceeding. It'll be a so-called quasi-judicial proceeding, so it'll be a court-like sort of proceeding. I should have to each of you, hopefully tomorrow, sort of an outline as to the process and the applicable law, so that you can have that available to you for the hearing, so there isn't a surprise. At the end of the hearing, you'll be taking at least a vote or preliminary vote. What's supposed to happen is the production by me of some so-called findings and decision, a written decision that you all would have to approve. So I'm going to recommend that you all get back together in an open session a week later or so, so that you can, you know, approve the findings and decision, which will be consistent with whatever vote you take on May 8. That's it.
All right, thank you. Everyone received the town administrator report, a very detailed code enforcement report, very lengthy also, a lot of signs without permits. And then the zoning administrator report is also there in front of you. Tonight, we have two closed meetings. The first one is 3-305B subsection 3. This is to consider the acquisition of real property for public purpose and matters directly related there to land acquisition. And a second one, 3-305B subsection 7, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. This is for lease terms. At the conclusion of the closed meetings, the town council will be dismissed. Councilmember Demoter?
Aye.
Councilmember Munder?
Aye.
Aye. Councilwoman Reed?
Aye.
Councilwoman Galetti?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great evening.